All right. And time is six thirty-four and with us this evening is Kim Van Beck and Robert Kranglers, city attorney, also in the room Patrick Knight, Mike Roth, Bill Lovas, Ben Peters, Michael Gary. Thanks you two for not seeing me. The two Michaels from and Craig Schulte. I swear to God. All right, we have a full house this evening and of course we got the small room on top of it. So I'll open up with open forum and just a quick little summary as you can see in your notes, we have five minutes. Each subject, each subject, ten minutes. So with that said, is there anyone here for open forum this evening?
I am. Should I come?
Where should they?
Right to them.
You'll catch it okay? Oh, because really easy.
Thank you.
Very good. And if you or anyone who wants to speak this evening, just always start with your name.
I will.
Yeah.
And I brought, I wrote it down because I'm bad at public speaking, but I'm Will Brantonberg. I live at four oh one West Highway sixty-one. And I'm here in support of the application of Ryan and Momachi Martenson to build a new home that includes short-term rental units on their vacant lot in the resort commercial neighborhood zoning district. And I'm here because I know Ryan has deep ties to our community because we were classmates at Bridge Grove. And again, at ISD one six six, we've remained friends ever since and he's shown himself to be a leader and a really upstanding citizen and man. I know his family will add a lot of vibrancy to our town. And I also know the cost of living is high here, especially for people our age. And so I think affording them the opportunity to rent out their rooms will allow them to stay and enhance our community. And I just wanted to be here to support them. And that's it.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here for open forum this evening?
Yes. Also wrote it down. Hi, everyone. My name is Momachi Martenson. I'm Ryan's wife and a joint owner of our property at three oh nine Fifth Ave. For which we're applying for a conditional use permit. While Ryan grew up here, I've been coming to Grand Marais with about the past five years to visit family here. And I'm really excited to hopefully make Grand Marais our forever home. We really are hoping for the opportunity to be able to build a home for us and our future children here. I'm twenty-seven and Ryan is thirty-two. We have never owned a home before and it's not an easy time to become a homeowner. The land is already the single biggest purchase we've ever made and building a home on it will be the biggest financial expense of our lives. The only way we see it to make financial sense for us to build a new house on the vacant lot is by incorporating three short-term rentals on the lower level of the property. We are aware that two of our neighbors to our immediate left and right have raised concerns about the potential impact of our short-term rentals to them. The impact to our neighbors should be minimal given the following. First, this would be a small-scale operation where we plan to live on the second floor with our family. Second, we plan to insulate the walls well and communicate with our renters to make sure they keep noise levels to a minimum. Third, we plan to provide plenty of space for the renters to park directly on our property. If any issues arise, we will be able to address them promptly. It's also important to note that we're not taking an existing house and turning it into short-term rentals. Rather, we plan to contribute to the city by building a new house on a mostly vacant lot. And we plan to simply help finance it by renting rooms to guests downstairs. And we plan for the house to fit seamlessly into the neighborhood aesthetically and within the neighborhood zoning code allowances. Our neighborhood, the resort commercial neighborhood, consists of a mix of consists of a mix of residential, lodging, commercial, and government uses. So coexisting with these uses is part of the zone. In fact, our lot is just under a block away from the courthouse we're in now. So with the conditional use permit to operate a few short-term rentals in our home, we hope to have this opportunity to build a new house here, raise our family here and be a positive, long-term part of Grand Marais.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak as well.
And you know, it is your permit, so you can speak at that time during your life. You don't have to be restricted to open forum.
I think I'll just do it now.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening, council members and neighbors. My name is Ryan Martenson and I'm here with my wife, Momachi. We're applying for conditional use permit to build a new home with three short-term lodging rooms below our family living quarters on a newly purchased lot in the resort commercial neighborhood. For those of you who don't know me, I grew up living in Cook County in Schroeder and graduated from Cook County High School in two thousand and eleven. Since then, I've lived in a variety of different places, returning to Cook County often to work my parents' business and visit friends and family. What sparked our desire to settle down in Grand Marais is the upcoming birth of our first child. We were living in California this summer when we decided to have a kid. Our son is now due this February. We thought deeply about where we wanted to settle down and raise a family. We did not want to raise our son in a big city or move our home from place to place. We wanted to provide him with a stable home and a community. We wanted to be close to family. We wanted to give our son the opportunity to form meaningful relationships the last decades and being in a place where the broader community knows him and hopefully comes to care about him. We decided we wanted to make Grand Marais our home in Woodwood, Cook County, early August, today after Momachi finished grad school. Even being able to sit you before you today and present this has taken a lot of effort, help from the community and some luck. As you probably know, you can't just go online to find a house to rent in Grand Marais. And purchasing an affordable home suitable for a family within Grand Marais is an even greater challenge. We've stayed in the camper on my parents' property in Schroeder for a couple of months, networked with your friends and friends of friends to find a spot to rent for the winter, talked to home and property owners around town to try to convince them to sell unused property and crunched numbers on a variety of creative solutions and how we could buy something to live here permanently. We are happy to have found a solution that works for our family and even adds a new home to the city's housing supply. The zoning code allows our plan and the revenue from the short-term rentals offsets the high costs of land acquisition and high costs of new construction. With some extra work to operate and clean the rentals, we can afford to bring our young family here in a historically unaffordable time for first-time home buyers. To wrap things up, at the last planning and zoning meeting, a member of the committee mentioned how their ancestors rented out a part of their property as a way to support living up here. That resonated with me as my parents, Bruce and Cheryl Martenson, moved up here and built the pier originally in Schroeder when I was just a baby. It's a nostalgic twist to me that thirty-two years later, my wife and I will hopefully be building a home here with some rooms to rent to guests when our son's a baby. We hope to raise him here just as I was. The viability of a plan to settle down in Grand Marais and build a home can just under both tonight and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else this evening? All right, and with that I will close open forum and move on to time for our monthly updates. I know everything.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Hagan Miller with McGough Construction. I'm the site superintendent for the new City Hall Municipal Liquor Store. Just here to give you a quick update on the progress of the building. Mechanical and electrical roughing is about ninety percent complete. We still have a little bit of electrical and one more inspection on electrical, then we'll be ready to finish sheet rocking the remaining of the building. And sheet rocking is probably about eighty-five percent now, complete. We're starting to frame the parts office and ceilings. Taping the drywall has started late last week. And we'll actually have a painter in Monday to paint the ceiling in the bathrooms, so we can start the wall tile, which goes floor to ceiling. Like I said, tile's going to begin on Tuesday. Frames for the windows, that was a scary thing earlier this month. They were supposed to be delivered the first part of January, but we got good news. They are going to be delivered the third of December. And the glass for the storefronts, the main exterior portion of the building, that is going to be delivered on the fifteenth. And we'll immediately put those in with the frames. Exterior siding has begun in the sort of the west end, a little bit of the north sides of the building. And we'll be continuing that for the next three weeks. Also, we had the papers that'll be going in south of the building. Those were delivered this week and we'll be starting to install those earlier or late this week. And then we're going to start some landscaping, no plantings, but there's a lot of stone that has to be installed. And then the plantings will come next spring. So we're working on the inside of the building and the outside of the building. So that's all I had. And again, if anyone would like to have a tour, please stop by. And Mike sounds like he has a few people letting us bring by and take a look. So feel free to stop into the office. I'll give you a hard hat and vest and we can walk around.
The tiny capsule box that you built was absolutely beautiful. You guys have not seen it or you need to.
Don't tell my wife because she'll want me to do something.
Well, she should.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Beautiful box.
We're gonna hide it inside of the building.
But thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, no problem. It was my pleasure doing that for you guys. If there's any questions, just let me know. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, and if that will move on to the consent agenda, are there any questions about the meeting minutes of bills? It's like we're getting ready for the post Thanksgiving all night event. So anything on that?
No, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, I'll in favor. Okay, thank you both. I think we're all good. Catch that, Kim. Next up, we're going to meet our new wastewater superintendent. Hi Scott, if you'd like to come forward and meet us as well.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity. My wife and I have vacationed up here for many years and we decided we want to retire up here. So I've got somewhere between six and sixteen years depending on on how things go. But yeah, I'm looking forward to it. My wife is home taking care of our grandson right now, but she's we fell in love with the place years ago and just wanted to come back up here. So I've been doing water and wastewater. I went to school back in the nineties for water wastewater. I had a bachelor's in biology and it was a good tie-in and and I've enjoyed doing the water wastewater. And so when this position came up, I was chomping at the bit. I couldn't have been more excited about this area. So I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. So any big surprises so far? Any settle in? And are you here full-time now?
I am officially here full-time now, yes. Yeah, the city of New Prague has been very grateful about the flexibility for me to work part with them, so that way they still had a Class A operator to to take care of their wastewater plant. They've got a thirty million dollar wastewater plant built fourteen years ago. State of the art and it's still state of the art. And so I've been able to come here and Mike and I have had conversations about what opportunities this facility has and the water facility has and some opportunities for you know, updating things and looking forward to implementing those things as time and funding allow.
We just had a conversation about that and I thought studying.
We did.
This evening, so.
Very much top of the list.
Let's try to keep it under thirty million.
That is a beautiful facility. It looks like a library or a school. So they, well, the town is going to grow up around that facility. And so they wanted to really do it nice. And so that way they felt they wanted to be a good neighbor. And so a lot of that money went into odor control equipment. And so I've got some experience with that and the type of facility it is, it's very technologically savvy. And so I've got a lot of good computer experience and learning how to run the the industrial computers, the PLCs that that actually control the wastewater plant has been a big challenge and I've enjoyed learning and tweaking that system to get you know, we've worked out a lot of bugs in the fourteen years that we've been there. And so it was, it's been one of my joys to be able to do it and I'm looking forward to bringing a lot of that information and skills here.
Perfect. I very much appreciate it and you hit a hot button there on the old older topics.
You can all hear why we're happy to have Scott here. He's been part-time for two months. Yeah. And of course, we've had more than enough things for him to do. But it's just the right thing to have him be able to help out his own community and so. It was very cool. Glad to be patient and
Yes, thank you very much. So if you guys want to come down for tours or whatever, I can make a wastewater operator out of you. So the invitation stands.
Yes, it will.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, thanks, Scott.
Thank you. All right, next is an award presentation for Grand Marais Public Water Access Project. Is that coming online?
We have visitors in the room.
Okay. Oh, perfect. Okay, then Jenny, you can sit here.
I'm Bethany Chapman. I'm with the Minnesota DNR.
And I'm Jenny Reckensberger, also with the Minnesota DNR.
And earlier this year, I got the opportunity to go to the SOBA conference in North Carolina to speak about an award that you guys have been on. So if you want to go to the next slide. So SOBA stands for the State Organization for Boating and Fish. And they were established in nineteen eighty-six as to be a collective voice. And it's a national nonprofit organization promoting recreational boating facilities. So it was exciting when I got to go to North Carolina, I got to meet people from California and Florida and they had all these crazy cool projects that they were working on and it was cool to present on this project. So you want to go to the next slide? So this project award that you guys won focused on a few different items that they wanted to cover. Your project demonstrated innovation, utility, high-quality uniqueness and cost effectiveness. So yeah. Next slide.
So this is what the harbor used to look like before we took it over. There was a small access over in the campground and it was between Dave and our Parks and Trails division that decided that we really needed something a little bit nicer down there. So we decided to move forward. Next slide. So this was all we had. We had a small little boulder wall that was there and one small launch. And for the amount of people that use this, it was definitely a need for this community. So this is the new plan. You'll see the new break wall as well as a new parking lot with ADA parking and some we also had to put in some drainage ponds to take care of thank you, so that we can treat all that before it goes back into the experience. These are the numbers that we.
Yeah, you guys had a huge project.
Huge project for Grand Marais.
Total cost was three point three million. Construction was about two point nine and then design with engineering with structural and coastal bridge engineers and architects was around five hundred thousand. We wanted to highlight the city of Grand Marais in twenty eighteen was able to get about two million dollars in state funding, which really helped this project come to fruition. And then we had a bunch of other funding that Kent and Nancy were able to find with the DNR to cover. So this kind of highlighted some of the work that was done by Smith Group. They were able to look at the wave action from the previous breakwater and help design a structure that allowed boats that were under twenty feet in length to be able to retrieve boats with wave action under six inches. And then another cool part of your guys' design was this breakwater that can withstand all the seizures that you guys get and ice heaving, but also allow people from that campground to have access of your historic lighthouses and Lake Superior.
The whole community is pretty excited about that.
Yeah, and FDA compliant, which is awesome. Jenny can speak more on all the fun construction.
So when we started this project, we did take out the old wall. We took that rock out. We actually saved it. We took a look at it to make sure that it wouldn't bust apart. It wouldn't fracture when we used it in the new wall. So we were able to save that and reuse it. This is a picture of once we got the base for the wall, we were able to start pouring concrete at the far end and working our way back toward the shore. So these are the forms. This is how tall the wall is on the backside. You'll see that we do have the start of the rock as well that kind of protected the whole concrete pour as we were doing it. And I did have to yell at him a few times for getting, you know, some styrofoam in the leg, but we took care of it. So they did work really well. We had some fantastic park residents went and did some some nice photos for us. This is also from, I believe this one is from our engineer that designed this from Smith. But there was a lot of really nice aerial photos from drones. This just shows basically, you can see the base, the footers on the bottom, and then we just built up around that. The first section right there, you can see this, the sidewalk going in after the wall was poured. And this is our finished product. This is just the wall. We hadn't started. It was a two-year program, a two-year project. The wall was first and then the parking lot was second. So there we have our parking lot with ADA parking and yeah, lots of good parking.
And then this summary thing is when you guys installed the ADA bathroom screenings and changing station and then that board safe kayak dock. If you want to go to the next slide too. You guys really focused too on low maintenance native vegetation as well. So my boss and I got to come up earlier this year and give it a go and it was really fun and easy to use. So definitely exciting that you guys have this in your community. So yeah, we just got more photos. We wanted to show them all up so you can breeze through those. But it was fun to talk to the local residents to get their thoughts and see all the kids running around and people kayaking. So it's a great addition to your community. Now you can hang a plaque somewhere nice.
There you go, Dave.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you guys have any questions?
I would just add a few things to this. We might know this or might not, but the genesis of this project came from the master planning beginning like twenty oh eight, twenty oh nine. So it was a community-driven master planning fifteen years ago that made this project possible. For a long game, right? Fifteen years to the fruition of a vision of really the best premium public access we could afford. Some of the community feedback shaped this in terms of the wall and the accessibility. And the idea that the DNR and the city were like equal partners on this was really successful. It was a community-driven project. DNR was more than responsive to the community. Yeah, I made a wish list sort of, if you will. You know, the wall's got to be no higher than existing rocks. It's got to be accessible. You know, as a community, we really drove the bus here and I was pleased to be with it all along. Signed a partnership agreement in like twenty eleven to transfer the official public water access from what is, what had been, you know, Coast Guard, boy, Coast Guard parking lot over to the park side public access here at the end of the road of the rec park. And yeah, really successful project in its community focus and it's more than just a boat ramp for boaters. It's a public park space for all. We really put that to the test this past season with warm Lake Superior waters. The harbor was very swimmable in July and August. And so we almost saw like a conflict of user groups. And so it's, you know, we'll certainly grow with it as the community finds out about it. The boating community in particular, I think, is still figuring it out as to, oh, it's a new launch. It's on that side of the bay. The old launch remains. Right? The docks there, the ramps there, it's usable. It's preferred by a few. But it's nice to have this new launch that really serves a lot of the community and a lot of goals we're accomplishing. So thanks to the support from the council along the park board.
Here's a big thing.
It's your team effort, but it's great to be rewarded. And thanks for accepting this award for us.
Yeah, people were very impressed throughout. You know, they have big coastal things and it was really exciting to talk about Lake Superior and our cute little.
Great. We'll put this in the new city hall shortly.
I'll keep it in the meantime. Yeah, there you go.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Project and that our community really is behind again. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Of course, thanks for coming to the season.
Yeah.
All right, we have two resolutions from the Planning Commission. The first is twenty twenty-four dash forty-three conditional use. Michael?
Yeah, so with this one, one thing I just want to start off with a little bit of a correction. And here it says that there are two public comments and that they were in opposition, but I think that one of them was rescinded.
Well, so there were three.
Yeah, there were three.
Oh, there was three. It was Johnson and then there's a couple.
Bell.
Yes, bells, right. And then oh, okay, gotcha. I was saying, gotcha.
And then there was a question.
And then that's a question. So she wanted to make sure that her question wasn't okay, well, very good. So with that, you know, we obviously reviewed everything that was presented to us. And I think the sense from the commissioners was that you know, the sense that we were going to have you know, a new home built there was something that made us, was compelling along with knowing that the family was going to be living above their own business in the neighborhood. That those, that there are other short stays in the neighborhood in that zoning area. And so overall, I think commissioners were felt strongly that it was a good move, that it would be great to have family there, that this is you know, it certainly is approved in that, that it's permitted in that area. And it seemed like a good use.
We had a condition
Oh, that's right.
On itself that
Itself that um that this condition is allowed only through this owner. Uh, and that if they sold the property, it would it would not transfer.
Yeah.
They would have to reapply.
Is that short-term zone though? Yeah, and then the other short-term rentals in that neighborhood then are below that. Across from here, actually.
Would you like those short-term rentals?
Where's the short-term of it?
The hotel. Then what used to be Kevin or Keith's place now. I know it was long-term.
There's some that have transitioned from short-term to long-term and to single-family again. It's it is a dynamic relationship.
Yeah. And parking is not.
Off-street. It's all off-street.
Yeah, you can see in.
Plenty of, plenty of pub.
Yeah, and they have the parcel behind this one. Okay. And there's already a driveway off of the Gunpoint Trail there. Yeah, or you have to create a different.
There is, there's an existing garage on the property.
Great, that'll be used for regress and getting it on and off the property, that same.
That same spot.
I guess we didn't.
I mean, I don't.
Certainly looks that way in the plans they presented.
Yeah, because we'll. See that map on here, though.
I think there was a map.
Oh.
Yeah, some of it blew up so big that I can't.
Yeah, I got.
Which should have been shrunk.
Yeah, but but in that original map, but yeah, it looks pretty clear, like.
Relatively small footprint of of a home. I mean, it was a modest home um with three. You you I think it appeared like studio or efficiencies.
Yeah.
Um, on the first floor, and then they would occupy the second floor, um owner-operator.
Yeah.
Yeah, no self, come in, yeah.
Oh, yeah, maybe you can just see.
And there was ample parking.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and even before you add the. And even before you add the the rear, the lot in the back is also there.
Yeah, and they're in the back on the.
Yeah. Oh, there they went. Yeah. Well, it's the one of Bloomberg.
Yeah, when they had that trailer.
Right.
There, yeah.
Great for a little part.
Okay.
You hear the. Plans that didn't show up in the paper copy too. It does, yeah, and other. Yeah.
Yeah, that that's in here, but it's something I can't.
Yeah.
I see it, yeah.
But does say that they want to be able to see your room from the kitchen.
Are there any questions besides what we've already discussed? Do you have anything?
I would make a motion.
Would anyone like to second that?
I would.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? All right, um. All in favor of resolution twenty twenty four dash forty three Martinson conditional use? Aye.
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 Right, and with that, that passes. All right, next up is uh resolution twenty twenty four dash forty four angry trout variants.
And of course, we we get to see every little thing that ever happens on this property. When they put out a little bit of a porch, a little something, uh because of where they're where they're located. We will always. Um, but as you can all see, I'm sure from the the photos, what what they're adding. Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's on the backside.
So this is towards the neighbor and then.
Couldn't get any closer to the lake if you wanted to.
Yeah.
We can just put a few more rocks.
That's right, extend the land a little. Find out where the.
Well, that was already done out here. More than once, I imagine.
Oh, yeah, for sure. But anyway, uh I think that it it didn't strike anybody as asking too much. Um, and you know, we we know that. They've been a a good partner there in the city a long time and. Any reason not to, and we didn't get any responses from any neighbors with any complaints.
Would anyone like to make a motion for regulation twenty twenty four dash forty four angry trout variants?
Uh, I would make that motion.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All right, any further conversation or questions? All in favor of resolution twenty twenty four dash forty four angry trout variants?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. All right, now we're gonna move directions. Time for the tree board or update.
I was watching the news down there and it's like. Sixty-eight mile an hour lens was recorded here in Grand Marais.
Now, over, yeah.
Yeah.
Ask Mike.
Yeah, I might have had one land.
Oh, that's right.
I want a tree going. Everyone just missed the.
Well, it wasn't mine, but.
Your house or any of your other properties? Spooky.
It was a little eerie.
They went down by um. On the corner, I'm just on the up from the uh camp.
Yeah.
That marks for all boards.
So you're gonna have to conduct a new tree inventory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make it clear itself, tree by tree.
Now you're gonna just.
Okay, Shane, what do we got?
Yeah, so thanks for having me. Um, Chris, he asked me to give you a little update. Saw the memo. The tree board has been eating, had a couple meetings um in September. Did the tree inventory. And we got some preliminary data, so. My slides, just a few things. Um, this is the area they inventory. It's a lot like Grand Marais. Um, the green is public trees that they either. Walked around and actually measured the tree itself, if it was a significant tree, like a boulevard tree or or. Standing out in a park, you know, like like in downtown um along the harbor. Or they surveyed with satellite images or even flew drones over those areas to gather information. Uh, the orange is private trees, so there was. Fill out to, you know, offer information about the trees in their yards. Um, and then the purple, the city-owned woodlots, um, those are a lot of. Well, the one is is um the Public Works Garage, and then there are some alleys there. And they did, they did do a pretty good survey of those. So. Most of the trees, half the trees, um are five species, spruce, mountain ash, red pine, red maple and birch. And then the rest, the other half of the trees are all kinds and. We got scientific names down there, so I don't know how good your 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 scientific names are for trees. Mine are a little rusty, but. There's a lot of, there's a lot of native trees and there's some non-native trees mixed in there, some ornamentals. Um, but yeah, white spruce, that's, we got a lot of white spruce.
And they're getting old.
And they're getting old, yeah. Um. This is a measurement or just a a graph of the tree's D B H diameter at breast height. So people actually were talking about, they saw a guy out hugging trees and like that's actually what he was doing, because he's measuring the trees at the. At at the breast height. And so most of the trees are young trees, you know, the green and then the darker, the. Well, the green are sixteen inches and greater with, you know, that one percent or greater than twenty-five inches. So most of our trees are actually small, young trees.
He was hanging around Highway sixty-one a lot.
Uh, and then this is the condition of those trees. So the green is poor or dead and dying, so that's two percent. And then fair to good is the rest of the ninety-eight percent. Uh, so. What's not measured is missing tree wells, like or trees that were removed. So that that's not included in this this survey. It's just trees that he didn't get his hands on. And also not included is where those poor trees are, the dead and dying trees. We don't have that data yet. We'll get that data, but we don't have it yet.
So it is the fact that that sort of upper city land get included in here and it's a lot of land. Kind of skew these percentages. I mean, if you really were trying to focus about him in the city or whatever.
Yeah, it could. So. This is, yeah, the early data. This is what they shared with the tree board in October. Just wanted to give us a little crumb.
Yep.
Um, what he found, the 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 surveyor, biggest hazard conflict with trees is. Overhead wires and so, uh, you know, forty-two instances where a tree and a wire conflicting, uh, so. Twenty-nine instances where, probably less now, where there's a dead or a limb or something that's potentially hazardous. Um, few property or sidewalk conflicts. Can think of some property and sidewalk conflicts, but um so that's not really a a great piece of data, but we'll get more details. But interesting thing, sixty-six percent of our trees totally fine, ninety-two percent of spruce. Seeing spruce budworms, depoliation. Again, that was our biggest. Most um abundant tree, and so they're all getting eaten by spruce budworm. But spruce budworm are native, so it's kind of a cycle here. Um, and then there was identification of possible emerald ash board. Twenty-one trees. So he identified those as possible. You didn't actually. You'd have to cut a tree down and and look or take samples and you didn't. You just saw what their what their holes look like. So that would be. Um, the D N R hasn't yet identified emerald ash board here. So that would conflict with their. If it's true.
Wire conflicts doesn't mean pipelines, by the way. So it means communication lines, because they're more prevalent in lower.
You mean like the wires going from your house up to the alley?
I mean, fiber and telephone, the fiber telephone mounted lower on.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then you have other lines feeding residential properties off of the. Right away.
And then just wanted to share where we're at in the process of developing the forestry management plan. Is we've done the data gathering. Now they're they're summarizing the data. Um. Our next step is to get the full. Data and start to make goals about what the plan should try to accomplish based on the data. So we're having our next meeting in December and then we'll have in our hands a grant of the plan after. We don't have anything right now. We just have.
Great. And that's basically what this grant paid for was the inventory rate.
Plan, yep.
Okay.
That's that's.
Yep.
It's just a refresher. When um we applied for this and Shane did all the work writing it up. Um, we asked for the larger grant, which would have gone right through to taking out diseased or trees that needed to go. And getting them replanted with um trees that would also be more sustainable and long-term, and that's the part we didn't get. But we have the ability to reapply once we get these things set up and maybe see this.
Ability here on the tree board. Do you have anything else to capture that? All right.
Shane.
Yeah.
I think this was a a really great example of how it's a big project. But once you, if you successfully find grant money, there are, you know, it's the other experts who are doing the work. And of course Shane is writing a grant. It's not a lot of fun.
Coordinating the grants.
But um, you know, then.
Thanks.
That it step in and and really make a lot of this happen. Of course, now we have a tree board again.
It'd be cool too.
Yep.
All right, so now we move on to ordinance twenty twenty four oh three for cannabis.
Looks just like the counties, right? Well, almost. A lot of reformatting. There are a few sections in here that are just straight up different.
Yeah.
With spots that uh you had discussed at your last meeting that may need to be revisited. Just to make sure that we got the numbers right. So I'm just gonna walk this and start to finish, but we're not gonna spend any time on anything unless you want to.
Okay.
So state laws adopted, per percent intent statement. Uh, and then we've got some definitions, uh quite a few less than the. Little definitions in the county's ordinance, because we're adopting the state law and the definitions we're using are theirs. So we repeat a few of them here. But mostly we don't re redo that work. There's um. We're holding ourselves accountable to the state's rule to respond to their licenses within thirty days. That's a state rule. We have to do it. So whether we write in here and that doesn't matter. Severability jurisdiction enforcement. So this is a little bit different than the counties. County has public health involved in a lot of things and we don't have the access to a public health department. So I am responsible for the administration of the ordinance and we are asking Cook County Sheriff to be responsible for enforcement. Because they do law enforcement for us. Uh, I'm not sure it's a hundred percent clear what the difference is all the time. So you should just imagine if we're talking about processing paper or doing licensing work or doing. Simple inspections, that's administering, answering questions about interpreting, things like that. If we're talking about um noticing violations and taking action on them, that's enforcement.
Well, and if I understand this too. We also, they have a mechanism to report any of those things, right, to O C M? And they are responsible to come up here and check those out. I remember, that's how I remember reading it.
O C M has been doing inspections uh locally. But when we pass an ordinance, then we begin registering. We will be responsible for inspections. So I'm not sure we know yet what we get to have O C M still do on our behalf or what they intend to do regardless of our participation.
I meant complaints.
Yeah.
In in that sense, you you have to send that to them and then they're responsible. In, in that sense, you, you have to send that to them and then they're responsible to come and investigate it. And they keep track of all of that. I didn't mean like the annual compliance inspection.
I'm still not sure we're not gonna be involved in that. Let's hope we don't have to worry about that frankly, but. We do say violations of this ordinance um are a misdemeanor. So that means our rules that you're gonna pass right here are punishable by. M- misdemeanor means ninety days in jail. So I mean, maybe it's thirty days. I don't know, Robert Kit, but. It's just, it's a serious crime, right? It's not, it's not nothing. And so if we're going to be um. Having somebody prosecute one of those locally, I'm sure we'll be involved heavily in the investigation as well. So cannabis registration of businesses, this is all we notice. Um, this is the reason we have the ordinance is because now we. Are responsible for registering. Register is a good word to note here. It's not licensing. The state is licensing the business. We are just registering the business, meaning we're keeping track of. Um, we will do a preliminary inspection, we're saying, and we will be responsible for annual compliance checks. Which of course, we're gonna have the Cook County Sheriff's Office involved with. To do the age verification, but we are the ones that will do the, just check and make sure the rules are being followed. Uh, this is a little intimidating until you remember we're limiting it to one. We got one potential store that we're going to be checking one time a year to make sure that they are in compliance with our ordinance. Uh, we have our own requirements about whether we will register them. So most of this comes straight out of the state law. Um, let's see, there is. I mean, we're gonna make sure that they are compliant with the requirements of. Local ordinances established, which means this one right here, but also that they're current on property taxes and assessments at the location where they wanna be. And then they're gonna provide us with some information on an application form. We haven't created it yet, but this is what we're gonna ask for in it. They, they will pay an application fee. We've listed the reasons, the basis for denial. If we're gonna say no to a registration, it's because of one of these things here. This again mostly is out of the state's template. And, and they basically have, you know, prescribed what you can deny it for, right? I mean, we can't really. Go outside of that.
Well, um, yes and no. I mean, they, they've been pretty specific on a lot of things.
Yeah.
But we're saying if they're not in compliance with this ordinance, we can say no. And we have some leeway as to what we can include in this ordinance. So there is some ability for you to make decisions about why you might say no. It's not a lot.
I would say it's pretty limited, right?
Yeah, cause I thought it was just like place, time.
And manner.
And manner.
Manner, time, place includes a lot of stuff.
That's right.
Yeah. And they were specific about what they meant by some of those things, but some of them. Cities and counties are being creative in what they think that means. And you know, it'll take some time to sort out for sure. Uh, registration uh fee. And, and we're saying not exceed five hundred. We're also saying. Uh, the renewal registration shall not exceed a thousand. That's the state's limit. And we're also saying we will include these in chapter thirty-six of our code, which is our fee schedule, but we. Haven't done that yet. So perhaps in reading number two, we'll actually just add those amounts in if those amounts are what you want them to be.
And so I, I had asked some questions, I think, earlier. So number two, or is it a copy of the valid state license? Well, this is all be through software. I mean, we're gonna get noticed that someone has been granted a license or trying to get them and they'll all be. Online. Like we're gonna be trading paper back and forth.
Well, yeah, I think, I think we're.
So, I mean, and it's coming from them and then we just have to do these few things. Cause. I don't know, there is a lot. At least you should be charging some business, right?
We should, because we will be expending effort on communities behalf to take care of this. Um, the history of compliance, uh, by way of its renewal, the applicant shell consent or lease by OCM to the city. This is something that's in a lot of ordinances. There might be some question about, cause it gets back to the, well, so what if we ask for this? Do we have any basis to deny? And I think the reasoning here is. That maybe the OCM has some historical compliance records that are actually germane to our ordinance. That they wouldn't deny because of, cause they don't know what our ordinance says, but that we might deny because we find something out. I don't expect this to be an issue, but it's just, it's in there right now because of something like that.
Yeah, because to me that gets back to the fact that basically there, I mean, we have an obligation if they're not doing something right, we have to let OCM know.
So that's next. If we're going, we have the, the authority to suspend a registration. And the duty to notify OCM if we do that and, and why.
And then what they have thirty days, they have to, they can't sit on it either.
Yeah. A response. I mean, I don't know what response means, but they can't sit on it and do nothing for more than thirty days. They don't necessarily resolve it at that point. Limiting registrations, we're limiting to one. We can't limit to zero.
Do we, do we ever really know that? When we talked in your meeting last week with the county, like, do we know this? I, I don't have a issue other than I just wanted to make sure we're making a decision based on what we know.
If we pass this registration ordinance, we know it can't be zero. If we don't pass a registration ordinance and we rely on the counties, it's not clear whether it can be zero or not, but it's not a for sure no. I suspect that it wouldn't survive a real challenge, cause it seems like it's really. In the face of the, what the state's direction has been on this, but I don't think we really know. And I don't think there's real clear language that describes that.
Cause it did this on a community level, so it just, it does feel like an issue that. Yeah, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another. I just wanna be real clear why we're doing it. And it's not because we think we have to. I mean, whatever everybody wants. It would be nice to have clarity about.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really got the idea that we are compelled. I didn't, I didn't feel like we really had that. Leeway. I mean, that's what kinda sucks is that we can't really make a decision too much. I mean, maybe there is manner, whatever that. Helps us maybe weed out some of the, the people we may not have. But we can't make it municipal.
Well, here's manner um and place, both of which are relevant. Here is zoning and buffer requirements. This is straight out of the county's list. There was disagreement about this at your last meeting, but it seemed like a majority was willing to. Include these numbers as they were in the draft you looked at. Let's just revisit that to be sure. A thousand feet of a school, five hundred feet of a daycare, five hundred feet of a residential treatment facility, five hundred feet of an attraction. Within a public park that is regularly used by minors and includes a playground or athletic field. So that's our buffers, thousand feet from school, five hundred from those other things. I'll just quickly show you.
And that was the standard that, sorry.
The state is five hundred. I will let you know, at least for a school, and I will let you know that I looked just kinda see what was going on around the state. Both the city of Minneapolis and St. Paul actually lowered that to three hundred, which really surprised me. But I, I personally can't support a thousand feet. When we're trying to have a business district do its thing and then a school comes. I won't, all this is great to support our children, but nobody at G E S seemed concerned that they were building a school right close to a. Broke to sell cigarettes. And we wouldn't let a building go up close to the school that was gonna, you know what I mean? And I think it's common sense that we wouldn't have. It's not like I'm expecting to, there's a flip to think about it, but. I just feel like if we're gonna have zoning and this is a business district, and then surprisingly to see two large metropolitan areas. Who are gonna have a lot more of these businesses than we ever will. Um, didn't seem concerned about that. Um. And you know, the county put it up to a thousand. Can.
But so the. Okay, so it's. But we have, we have the ability to adjust that.
You can set it at anything you want. One of the things the county is already looking at.
Yeah, I think the map, is that correct?
No, I mean, the map there, so that, so the blue, you, you can't.
That's right. If based on the thousand feet from school, five hundred feet from those other uses. This is the blue areas are what is inside the buffer zone. You cannot have a retail facility there. So you're, you're allowing one in the, in the entire city. The majority of our commercial zones that allow retail use are open to that one. But there are some spots where we would allow retail use that are not open to that one.
Mm-hmm. What about municipal? Municipal cannabis dispensary?
Yeah.
Is that a possibility in the future?
Hmm, it's in this ordinance. We'll get to it.
Yeah.
Um, so when you put this together, um. Go back to that episode. Baby, you don't even have, is that just putting up the circles? Is that how you create that? Like, there's a circle? Like, are these circles with the core, like?
You can see, there's a dot here.
Oh, like for the daycare.
Which is the use. And then wherever the dot exists, lives inside of a parcel. So you can see the actual black outline of the G E S parcel.
Yep.
Yep.
And then the, the buffer is a thousand feet from every piece of that black line around the property.
So that kinda creates this one?
Yep.
So you change that to a half of that, which is really where the state starts.
And it gets you all the way to Highway sixty-one. So it's about four hundred feet or less than to get from the property, the G E S property to have a sixty-one. So you, you, at five hundred feet, you'd still be well into Lashinsky's property. Here's one of the things our ordinance doesn't do yet and counties doesn't.
Uh, okay, so that's I G A and Mrs. Sisters? That's right. I know you kinda calculated that last time for us.
That's right. Sisters place is inside of that blue.
So somewhere we'd be roaming here.
That's right. Even if we went to five hundred, are they? Yeah.
I G A is probably not at five hundred. It's probably right outside of it. But what part of it are we measuring? And so our ordinance doesn't say any part of the building can't be within five hundred feet of any part of the property. Uh, that's the way that this map is drawn, but that's not what our ordinance says. Our ordinance does not define it that explicitly. And the county is looking at their ordinance the same way and thinking, we need to be more specific about. What's the distance measured to and from? Is it from front doors? Is it from the school to the front door of a, of a building? Or is it from, you know, we just need to think for that through.
Or is it property?
Yeah.
Property lines.
Right now, this is just saying, um. You, you could be on a property that's inside of this buffer if the building wasn't inside the buffer. So this is this, you know, like we look at like. I can't look at a good example of one there, cause it seems like it cuts it really nicely on the property lines. But let's say it did. It was at five hundred feet and most of the Steve Sports building was inside of the five hundred feet, but they still have a big parking area that's not. And there's room for a store there. They could put one in, even though most of their property is inside of the five hundred feet.
Yeah, and I mean. And then we, you know, like I was thinking where even if some of the properties heading farther east. I, I just don't understand why we need a thousand feet. We're almost to the end of the lake.
Yeah, I.
Especially the advertising.
I mean, I don't. Yeah.
Well, you can uh. Take a straw poll right now if you want, or you can think about it until the second reading if you want.
You can take a swipe at it. I mean, I think five hundred. Things fair. Considering our, you know, just looking at that and. The other four items are five hundred feet, daycare, residential treatment facility.
And, and playground, playground or athletic field. And it's not, it's not a public park. It's a, it's a playground or an athletic field that's in a public park. So the campground, for instance, there's only a playground in the campground and an athletic field in the campground that trigger it. It's not the campground itself, even though the whole thing's a public park.
Right, gotcha.
And now the, the triangle in front of the library is not a public park and it doesn't have a playground or an athletic field. So it doesn't trigger this.
That part was kinda confusing to me, especially cause kids are hanging out there now a lot and they're going there after school a lot. And they're right downtown, but.
Yeah.
It, it, which it seems kinda funny in a way that we aren't really protecting those kids.
Well, a facility like this gets built and then somebody says, I wanna build a playground over here. Oh.
Then uh.
Well, actually we have.
Not gonna be able to.
That's the next language. You can put the playground in. Now we're at the five hundred foot.
They can still be there. If they were there before the playground, they can stay.
Okay, yeah.
And then what if, if there's ever like a sale or a transfer to a different owner, does that trigger uh? Uh, you know, then they.
Are these uh.
This is cannabis business seeking regulation from continuing operation at the same site. So I don't know that it answers that question a hundred percent.
Yeah, I wouldn't have thought of that, just.
The license is not transferable, but.
No, not transferable.
Yeah. Okay. So give me a few bought the building and you got the license.
The size of our.
Five hundred feet, five hundred feet. Like you three.
Well, I'm just looking at that. I think if you, if that, you, that's drawn up as a five feet right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or we can go whatever amount, I mean, we can go whenever amount we want. I mean, that's the state started this.
And I think the, to your point, your earlier point Tracy, I mean, it does. Not entirely, but it starts to loosen up on the east end of sixty-one. We go to five hundred. And that will certainly. Get more of our retail area available. But I think, you know, like some of those other ones. So I mean, that's like Maria's and then that's.
Daycares, yeah.
Daycares.
National Church daycare.
Yeah. What do they have on here? It's five hundred.
Now I think we probably do have flexibility with. This type of activity, this is time, place, manner stuff. Like we had other uses or some of these didn't make sense to us.
Right.
It, and if you look at this, obviously the school, the main I S D one sixty-six, and then the community center and all that property is really what's triggering most of this buffer zone. But almost all of that is a place where we wouldn't allow this store to be anyway, just from zoning perspective. So the only zone that the main school property buffer zone really gets to. Is it probably squeaks through the top of Johnson's and, and uh. And just misses Sisters Place. Um, and it definitely is inside of I G A and, and Steve Sports. Uh, not the front door, but definitely through the building. Uh, the B D A, we do allow retail use in. And it is well within, you know, anything close to the Gunpoint Trail is well within that thousand feet. And so this. That's really the only place where the thousand feet from the main school makes a difference. So five hundred feet from the main school, the only change that would make is they would potentially open up some of the B D A, not right at the entrance to the. To the park, but you know, the lots that are right inside of there. And then it would take all the Highway sixty-one commercial property and make that clearly okay.
Well, we're just. You're talking about down here now.
No, I'm talking about.
Still just talking about.
Talking about that.
Not just G E S, but that main I S D one sixty-six.
And going e.
Cause that's their own thing, right? That comes down and this layers on top of it?
Well, there's a, there's a thousand foot buffer around that big rectangle that's the school right there.
Right, that, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So that's what's creating this part. And this is sort of layered on top of it, creating a second circle. And so this wouldn't influence some of it, which is commercial, which anyways. And we could even go below that. We could say three hundred or two hundred, right? And try to capture some of this or. I mean, it's really our choice.
Yeah, if you said three hundred, it probably then does open up. All of the business park, other than the church on the corner, which isn't gonna do it anyway. It certainly opens up all Highway sixty-one.
Does it open up both sides of Highway sixty-one?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not, it, you won't have perfect flexibility on where located on the Gunpoint Trail itself, cause really. It's under four hundred feet from G E S's property to that intersection. So that. Even at three hundred, you've gotta be right on the intersection if you wanna be on the corner. But there's the B room on. The rest of the Steve Sports property to put something if someone wanted to do that something.
But in the, what we really consider a, a commercial quarter along sixty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you're right. We do have businesses up that road, but they are necessary. I mean, you're right, we do have businesses up that road, but they are necessarily retail.
You look at the the daycares in the middle of the neighborhoods. The congregational church one at five hundred feet does get into commercial areas where we would allow retail stores. Might be okay though, because I mean, one of the problems we've got, I think it might be a problem anyway, is that in our. Commercial residential mixed use district, we allow retail as a primary as a permitted principal use. And um that is really ingrained inside of neighborhoods where people have homes. And I don't know if that's what we meant by, I mean, the. You could open a liquor store if we allowed those in town right there too, based on zoning. Uh I don't think that's what we really intended for retail to mean in that setting. So the the daycare ones actually makes sense to me at five hundred feet.
Well, I would like to go with three hundred if that loosens up some of that.
So three hundred for all of them or just for school?
Oh, just the school. I'm sorry. I was talking about all of them. That was only what I wanted to talk about is the school.
Okay, well, we'll write three hundred in the next draft and we'll give a map like this. To show what three hundred looks like.
Three hundred looks like. Visual.
Alright, let's switch back.
I mean, I think, I mean, just out of principle, though, why would you stay at five hundred on a daycare and and just go to three hundred on a school just for convenience on mapping? I mean, it's if that's the case, you don't.
Be hard to explain.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I I could see five hundred across the board. But. That would be a tougher.
What you what would be three hundred with it? I don't know. Yeah, maybe it doesn't. It's our town is so small, it's hard to have these. You need to start bumping into each other no matter what.
Why don't we do two maps for next time and we'll do one that's three hundred for everything and one that's five hundred for everything and you can look at those.
Okay.
Alright.
So what zones do we allow us in? Uh not the pink, right? The downtown, which is the kind of reddish at the bottom of the screen, we allowed in. Highway sixty one, which is all the yellow, we allowed in. The commercial residential mixed use, which is the dark blue, we allow it in. The H M U highway mixed use, which is the brown, grayish brown, we allow it in.
Where?
The. That it's allowed in. And so really, that's the first time.
Oh.
That we run into a school conflict is where you can see all that commercial property along the right adjacent to uh G E S building. And then the B D A, it's allowed in. So there's a lot of that property zone B D A that's on the south side of the Gunpoint Trail, which is. Mostly owned by the county and isn't going to have a store, because I don't think they're going to open one there. But there are a couple of lots on both sides of the road, then they're all well within the boundary. I don't care if you're three hundred or five hundred or whatever, they're going to be in the buffer zone for the school. So really, the only spot where it might work is if it's three hundred feet and you look at that. Lot, it's on the east side of the driveway to the B D A or any of the ones that are interior. Hours of operation, ten to ten. This is every day, ten to ten. You could change that to be different on Sundays if you wanted or something like that. But I don't know why we really have any, it seems a kind of arbitrary at this point.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if that's why you didn't have it in there, you know?
Advertising, two fixed signs on the exterior of the building, um unless otherwise limited by our zoning ordinance.
Just one thing, cause you you brought it up about how we're measuring.
Yeah.
Should we talk about that? Like, maybe we should just measure building to building. I mean, like, here's your, or building to lot, I guess, would make sense. Like, here's the school building.
Yeah. I'd say take that up a level and just understand that when you pass this, we're not done.
Okay.
That it because first of all, the state's not done and so we don't know how this is all going to play out and there will be things we didn't think of. Now, that's one we did think of. Maybe we'll have a chance to refine that a little bit for next time. I'd like to talk to Molly before she leaves about what they're thinking of the county. And um but if we don't get that figured out now. I think we still have six to twelve months before the state's going to be ready to do licensing.
Okay.
It's kind of unfortunate.
Yeah, I I I was just thinking for our mapping exercise, it would. Make a difference.
Yeah, well, we can come up with a couple of examples then and talk about how that would play out.
Okay.
The only thing we might be affected by is those. Are they gonna? No, well, oh, here we go again. So the social equity ones, when they get them ready, will they be as of the first of the year them ready to?
I I mean.
Still.
That's what they.
They said everything's ready to, they're ready by the first of the year, but I don't think they mean they're ready to grant licenses by the first of the year.
So that would still pause them on that too. They don't want, and you wouldn't be till the.
They're 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 done with their lottery, right? They've already done that part, but I don't think they're close to being ready to license these.
Know that articles that they were like in the final stage of going through and doing final determinations on those, but they wanted to have done by the end of the year, but it's still like. So do those people get them?
Well, I mean, we'll see, I guess. We have insurance requirements. We are allowing ourselves um to operate a municipal cannabis retail business. We're of course subject to our own rules here, which isn't always the case, so that's probably a good thing that we're mentioning it. Um it doesn't count towards the one limit, so even if we decide to open a store, someone else can still open a store as long as they meet other requirements and assortments. Uh we did not mention the county in this paragraph. So right as of now, this draft. Would not necessarily allow the county to operate a municipal store inside the city limits of Grand Marais. I guess if they intend to do that, they're going to have to come talk to us. And then this is newer stuff that wasn't in the county's lower potency hemp edibles. I was hoping that. Um the registration requirements for this would not be the same as the ones for actual full blown cannabis. Yep, but our attorneys are advising us otherwise that the statute's pretty clear that if you're registering, you're registering. There's a lot more of these that do low potency hemp. That the we don't have uh. We don't have a difference right now between how we're treating low potency hemp edibles in this ordinance. And how we're treating other cannabis retail businesses. So this will mean that. Uh we're now in the business of registering these. There's a number of places in town that are selling low potency hemp edibles.
So they'll have to register.
I believe they're all registered right now through the state.
Right, yeah.
And now if we pass this, when they re-registered after registered through us.
Okay, and then not the state.
They still had to work through the state.
I'm sure they still have to uh. Still work through the state, yes.
I can offer a comment on that. Um they will have to be licensed by the state going forward. Um just like the other cannabis businesses. So that is one of the big changes. Hence why the law is also requiring the registration part uh um as well.
Alright, yeah, so it'd be a similar.
Yeah, so this will mean where there was absolutely no boundaries into getting into this business of low potency edibles before this law was passed. There's going to be some now. And we'll see if everybody still wants to do it when they have to pay fees and go through the whole process of. Of the state's compliance. I know there are a lot of businesses that maybe all of them frankly, that were already. Uh inspected by the state in Cook County, including the Grand Marais Municipal Liquor Store. So uh this is good that they're they're getting some practice in on how they want to do it and uh.
That's right, because we're in that meeting um.
Yeah, Clearview had talked about their, showed off their. This is what the state looks at when they're here.
Yeah, so they. Uh Chris Fomeyak shared his inspection reports, so we could just see what it looked like. Because the guy came up and he did the whole shore, it was like a day and a half or something or whoever it was.
Yeah, there's a couple dozen, I think, registered in Cook County. And then they also found some places that were not registered. But we're selling products that you probably didn't think you needed to be registered for, but now you do. Okay, um.
So they are actually doing this.
Yeah.
The state, the department is busy at work.
Low, we're compliance checks, zoning districts, all that stuff is the same. The next now, storage of products for low potency hemp edibles. Um we're saying this is, I believe, out of state rules, but if not, it's pretty common. A lock case behind a checkout counter, at least one foot from conventional candy and gum. Um I think this is going to be a little tricky to uh figure out the. Whether it looks like. Um things that are, you know, meant to be sold for children, because there's a lot of very brightly colored fruit drinks that we're selling in the municipal liquor store right now. That if they were sitting on shelf with a bunch of soft drinks, you'd have no idea. Now, it's the municipal liquor store, so I'm not concerned about it there because we've got all the protection we need. We're carding everybody. We're not selling to people. But if it's in a convenience store, that's a different story.
Well, this, when I went to those conferences, the state had all these, oh, you know, very specifics on that. What they can do and not do.
Yeah. And creative when it comes to this.
So my question, just really quick on the zoning was, it's not just the zoning in the sections, but it also includes the five hundred feet things we were talking about. That's what I was trying to clarify on the zoning thing the other day. Is it both components?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Just want to make sure.
So then they'll still, and they'll have the insurance as well, the low potency. Oops, is that?
The insurance is the same, the buffers are the same, the zones are the same. Yeah, basically, we're saying they're they're going to be treated the same.
Wow.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's uh. I don't know if it's an overcorrection, but boy, I'm glad there's something because.
Oh, yeah.
It was a really strange thing to just have absolutely no rules about it in the state of Minnesota. So this doesn't seem like much. This still fits, I think, pretty well with how we do things around here, but.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about people that do it, they were like, oh.
So there's a consideration too when we think about that, those step back things where there you come. Because we're looking at probably more businesses that would be interested in this. It's been fairly popular, so.
Yeah.
Next, what, next time we talk about that, remember that it's.
Indoor advertising spaces above three feet in height. Um we'll have to make sure that we're actually doing that. I don't know that we have any advertising that I'd say in the municipal liquor store, but we certainly have product that's under three feet.
Yeah, for sure.
Um and then outdoors, two fixed signs here as well. Now, we didn't say anything about how big they are, what they can say or anything like that. Our zoning ordinance has all those rules. Then this. Um next chunk and the our attorneys asked, um should this be included in the same ordinance? This is something that um. Think the counties in particular all looked at and said, there are some missing pieces here when it comes to. Penalties for some of the things that the state has said are not legal. And so they're establishing those penalties. So we can talk more and I guess I'll talk to our attorneys and to the county attorney about whether this needs to be in ours, if it's in the counties already. Uh about the penalty section, since they're both our law enforcement and our prosecutor right now. I don't want to re-make this redundant if it doesn't have to be there, but. For now, this is just adding um. A couple of violations to to uh the things that the state kind of didn't include in theirs.
Okay.
So but they would, they wouldn't have jurisdiction oh in the city. Were they on their ordinance for this? I mean, if we don't include it.
I don't think so, uh which is why we did include it, but this will test that out to be sure. So this is looking at not, things that are not misdemeanors, but are just petty misdemeanors, so that the state wouldn't. Have included it in their rules and we're saying, okay, if you're underage. Then it's a petty misdemeanor to have two ounces or less of flour. Obviously, it's a misdemeanor than if you've got two ounces or more and you're underage. Uh but that's a state rule, not ours. Eight grams or less concentrate edible products. Um it's just putting those um underage, under twenty one rules in here that don't really exist in the state. Statute. And that is it. We've come to the end. It's ten pages of all new language in our code. Um yeah, it covers everything I think that the uh. Was in the state's template and it is in the counties that we participated in customizing and then it's going to give it things as well. And it's kind of.
So do we need to make a motion now and then a second reading?
If you are okay with where this is at, that's what I would ask is for a first reading tonight, so a motion and a vote and then we'll come back. At a follow-up meeting with some new maps and you can make sure those numbers are what you want them to be.
Great.
Before the second reading.
So so we need a motion for this?
Yeah.
Just.
So would someone like to make a motion for ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero three with consideration for. Potential modifications to, is that considered a setback? No, not using.
Buffer.
Buffer. Buffer zone, or is there anything else we need to clarify?
Well, there was the that legal language at the end.
Yeah.
The other piece.
Alright, and uh additional misdemeanors?
Okay, misdemeanors for underage.
For underage. Alright. Anyone like to make a motion?
I would make that motion.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 So I don't know if we answered your question specifically or not. We are allowed to have a store. We don't have an intention to right now.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Alright, Kim, Kim, did you get that correctly?
It's recorded.
Oh, we don't, okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Um alright, thank you, everyone. Hey, we're on to council and staff reports. Bill?
Alls I have is the animal, Arrowhead Animal Rescue. And they didn't really have anything new. I mean, it's just ongoing uh concerns from them about. The overall cost and mounting bills and. A very slow progress.
And they, they've not, they haven't lifted the agreement at all, you know?
I asked them what they wanted me to convey to the council and they really didn't have anything. Okay.
Anything else? Ben?
Nope, uh well, I was at the planning and zoning and then the H R stuff, so we've covered all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just plenty of those stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a P U C meeting and the. Uh P U C meeting, we did have a some, um we passed a three percent rate increase for electricity. Electricity? The E-electricity? Anyway, just to uh. Again, we summarized this at the P U C. I guess I can summarize it here so everybody can understand um. Wholesale price rates were increased about ten percent in twenty twenty three. They're charging us a uh wholesale energy cost. Um. Cost adjustment for twenty twenty three, which is about forty seven thousand dollars. That's an extra fee that we have. And um.
That's on about one point eight million is what we spend on wholesale electricity.
And um also their transmission expenses, transmission line expenses of about twenty thousand annually. And uh anyway, our past retail rate adjustments, so people can understand. Um we we did a three percent raise in two thousand sixteen, we did a two percent in seventeen. We didn't do any changes. Um eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one and twenty two. Um we did a three percent increase in twenty three. Two percent for this year, twenty twenty four, for next year, a three percent rate increase for twenty five. Basically, basically because of those other fees, I guess it's about eighty, what about eighty, ninety thousand dollars of extra. Expenses we're going to see for twenty twenty five.
Yeah, that's really to the credit of both the wholesale entity that we remember of, Southern Minnesota Municipal Power. Their efforts to control costs and be creative and just the work that we've done here. We've gone through. Some pretty significant uh times, including some really heavy inflationary times recently and. Not a lot of increases comparatively.
Yeah, because didn't you say there was like a ten percent?
Yeah, because didn't you say there was like a ten percent?
Yeah.
In twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
It's simply did a ten percent increase. Um. Okay, that was. Um, then for the rec part, we did finish up. Uh. Pretty good report for October, even though we started out with a wet May and June. Um, year to date, year to date revenue through the end of October. Is up five percent from twenty twenty three's total. So we did kind of meet our. Expectations of our increases for twenty twenty um four. And so that's good news, I think, for the city as far as as we're going through this budgeting process. Um, so between the expectations of what happened at the rec park, and I'm not sure what the numbers are, insurance savings, but.
Yeah.
That kind of helps us out when we go to set our our lobby. Where somebody there works for sale that works.
Yeah.
Um. Um, so. All in all, it was a busy summer again. For the rec park and.
Yeah, you know, I said some parts of town weren't having as good a summer.
And then the October was a nice weather month, at least where I was, it was eighty five.
You guys are having a nice.
That was great.
Yeah, it's nice fall, it was a nice fall. Yeah, so that's good. It pushes some numbers up for the parks. Yes, it's like a regular fall.
Yeah, a little late, but it's, yeah, still not bad.
Yeah.
Um, last. Wednesday, the North Shore Management uh. Group, organization, so they had been working for a while and revising the plan, and then they had public hearings. So they had a public hearing here last Wednesday down at the hub, so I went down there, great presentation. They had a brand new woman from the A R D C. Helping run this program and especially a bigger job for state. She's been at the A R D C for quite a while, but to come in description. Nice presentation. We had people from Portage, Schroder, Tophie Show, which included Margaret Watkins, which is very nice. And um some other people, so that was great. Um, if you've not already heard, there's an official press release that I believe has gone out, but the new E D A director is Heidi Crampitz. She'll be coming here with her family from Tranhassen. Her work career starts up around uh Kanabik County and the upper um part of the metro, like around Big Lake. Working in Noka and some other places as well, so she's had a really good mix of of um kind of metro, but then sort of those. Fringe areas that are more rural, larger and whatever, and she's done a lot of work. Um, economic development work, and of course, um, one big question is, you know, can you be a lone ranger on this? This is in a big department with the last staff, and she felt that really fit with a lot of what she's done in the past, and she. Put a lot of effort, apparently, um, wasn't part of the hiring committee, but we just sort of asked for, you know. Descriptives of what made this go well or, you know, had that direction for her, and um they commented that with the um. Potential with the money we have to get working on developing intact harbor, she put a lot of effort into trying to understand what that was and vision what working going. So that was really good. So we have a new E D A director, um. I once again signed off uh on the canvas board from the elections on Friday, um. I guess that was kind of it for that, you. Just, I guess, knowing just had a few questions, so everyone got their nice informative about. And I know we've been talking about this for the last couple of years, but do we have? Um, like a plan once we identify, or is it is the plan number one to identify? I know there's. And are there money in dollars we need to be going after? I mean, there's been so much thrown at this. Lead line stuff for several years, whenever I've gone to the conferences and stuff, you know, there's dollars for it, but do we have a?
We don't have any lead identified, and so and we don't expect to find. Let service lines, don't have any reason to believe we will find any, but because we just don't know what they are, it's the state we're in. We tried to provide that notice in what I thought was a reasonable way. Uh, the state just agrees, and so we'll be sending a new notice to everybody. It's much more inflammatory and. Um, you know, both scary things that we don't believe there's a real risk out. But it's what the state wants us to say, and so we will say it.
Excellent.
Um. Do we have any updates? I just, Chris killed on making any progress or any updates from him?
Well, you you probably saw, I'm sure you've got all my monthly reports memorized, and so you probably saw two months ago when I said that. It's hood and I sat down with Chris and his team and talked about potential ideas to move forward. And they they've sent us back a uh draft to look at. Couple days ago.
Oh, so you just got something finally.
Really just got it, yeah.
Okay.
So I think it's great, uh definite progress. I mean, it was two months ago, the conversation I thought ended well. With some really workable ideas, and it sure seems like Chris wants to get going again on it, which is good news too.
Yeah, yeah, awesome.
True, okay, um. I guess that's all I had. Oh, I do have one question, though, um, because I like to sleep well at night. So with the City Hall and Liquor Store project, um. And I asked this at the time. Are we in any risk at all right now of losing that tax credit for the thermal that we have to get back in touch with the. That our consultant is helping with this?
We're not in any risk of that. Um, if you want to get an update from them, I'll reach out and ask for one. But we've been tracking the numbers for that separately. They're taking care of all the reporting. So heating. Thermal, yeah, to get the tax credit.
But if there's any huge changes to tax law that might come sooner rather than later? Are we good?
I I mean, I can't can't see that, but we're doing what we can do, and we can't really fast track it more than it is. We don't, it's not done, so.
No, I know, I just, and I'm thinking that consultant's probably watching that very closely, so I just wanted to know. If we had any updates or anything, I realize.
They haven't, I mean, I don't know of any reason why we should be concerned about that. In the next two or three months, I think it'd be pretty hard for any changes to be made to any federal programs that quickly. But I don't think so. Um, yeah. Maybe.
It's out the door.
I don't know, and if it doesn't, for us, it's, it doesn't, there's nothing we can do either way. Yeah, we've already paid that, so. What?
How much money would that?
To do the.
I mean, how much? Yeah, how much tax credit would have been?
I think it's close to three hundred thousand.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was good. Well, there's not much you can do about it, just get it.
Yeah, we're going to do everything we need to do. So all that, I haven't, um, uh, when are you doing a tour?
Anytime you want.
Okay, anytime, let me know. Send me a text.
Want to go tomorrow morning?
Yeah. I gotta go give some blood, then I'll go. Bleed all over the place. Let's do that.
That's fine, you're fine, yeah. It's great.
So is that everything then, Michael? I'm sorry, you probably had stuff you wanted to say.
I've said so much, I don't have anything else. I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, we're not got to be is over with. Uh, thanks, Robert.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Uh, not yet, just a moment here.